So today's date is March the fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. And the time is now, after all of my delays, is six oh three P M. To avoid all of the mishmash with the pledge allegiance, I'm just going to say it by myself. Everyone else, please stand and put your hand over your heart. And I will say the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Planning Secretary, may we have the roll call, please?
Most definitely, Chair Arnold. Commissioner Carbajal? I didn't see Francis logged in yet. Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Rounds?
Here.
Vice Chair Jimenez?
Here.
Chair Arnold?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, so the next item is item number four, ex parte communication. This section is intended to allow all officials the opportunity You need to say something, Wayne? Okay. To reveal any disclosure regarding site visits or ex parte communications.
Excuse me, Chairperson Arnold.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Oh, Quang, Francis needs to be promoted as panelist, please. Oh, I guess I could do it. Okay. Okay, Francis, you should be promoted to panelist. Let me see if you're there. Did you see something that says promote to panelist? Okay, okay, good. Okay, thanks. Sorry, Chairperson Arnold, I apologize for that.
Not a problem. Okay, so let me start this again. This section is intended to allow all officials the opportunity to reveal any disclosure regarding site visits or ex parte communications about public hearings. Are there any ex parte communications to report?
Vice Chair Jimenez, none here?
Commissioner Carbajal, none.
Commissioner Rounds, none.
Commissioner Hernandez, none.
Commissioner Arnold, none. Okay, item number five. We have public comments are now open. Anyone joining us through Zoom can use the raised hand function if you wish to make a public comment on any item on the agenda or not on the agenda. The planning secretary will see if you have your raise, have you raised your hand through the Zoom application? You will have three minutes to speak. Planning Secretary, do we have any members of the public present that wish to speak today?
Chair Arnold, no, we do not.
Okay, I will now close public comments and move on to the next item. Next item is item number six, the minutes. Now, should we address these as separate? Or can we do them as one item, six, A through D?
Chair Arnold, technically, they're separate items, but I don't know if there'll be any. Usually, these are approved. There will be no discussion, so.
Well, let's just ask the commissioners if they have to, if they have one that they would like to pull out, just like we would have, that there was at the end of the meeting. So is any of the commissioners wishing to pull any of the minutes out to discuss any item on the minutes?
Commissioner Rounds will move six, A, B, C, and D if there are no questions.
Okay, and then is
Commissioner Carbajal, second.
Okay, is there any one that would like to see C or D on their own? Not hearing anyone. I'm going to take the motion as stated. We have a motion for the minutes for items A, B, C, and D. We have a motion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 So ordered. Okay, new business. I'd like to call upon the planning secretary to please proceed with the election of commissioner, commission officers for twenty twenty-two. Nomination Chairperson.
Thank you, Chair Arnold. I'd like to declare the office of the chairperson vacant and accept nominations that are now open. Does any of the commissioners have any nominations?
Commissioner Carbajal, I move Gabriel Jimenez.
Since Commissioner Arnold, I will second that nomination.
Are there any other nominations? We have a nomination for Gabriel Hernandez, excuse me, from Commissioner Carbajal to nominate Vice Chair Jimenez. So I'm going to close the nominations for chairpersons, since we have a second as well, and I'll take a roll call vote now. Commissioner Carbajal?
Excuse me, excuse me, secretary, you did say for Chairperson, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, not Vice Chair, okay. Okay, sorry. Okay.
Yes. Commissioner Carbajal?
Aye.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Rounds?
Aye.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Aye.
Commissioner Arnold?
Aye.
So ordered, we have a new chairperson, Chair Jimenez.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Gabe. I hate to put two years on you, but you did a great job, great job in my absences and I think the world of you.
Thank you, and I commend you, Chair Arnold, for all you have done and sticking with it and you know, your loyalty to the planning commission. Thank you very much. You did a great job.
Congratulations, Commissioner Jimenez.
Thank you.
That being said, I'd like to declare the office of Vice Chairperson vacant. And nominations are now open. Do any of the commissioners have any nominations?
I would like to nominate Commissioner Hernandez.
Do we, could we nominate? We're putting our nominations in now?
Yeah.
Yes.
I would like to nominate Commissioner Carbajal.
I second Commissioner Carbajal.
If that's, if that's not appropriate, I will second Commissioner Carbajal.
Okay, so.
Just to clarify, though, we're right now, we're just making nominations and then we'll vote in the order, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I second, I second the nomination for Commissioner Carbajal. For Vice Chair.
So what will happen now is the secretary. Well, Teresa, you know the process, sorry.
No worries, no worries. Since we do have more than one nomination, I'll take a roll call vote for
I will, I will thank Commissioner Rounds and concede to Commissioner Carbajal.
That's very kind of you. Thank you, Johnny. And saying of that, we have a motion of nomination for Commissioner Carbajal as Vice Chair, and we have a second. I'll have a roll call vote now. Commissioner Carbajal?
Aye.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Rounds?
Aye.
Commissioner Arnold?
Aye.
Chair Jimenez?
Aye.
Congratulations, Commissioner Carbajal. You are now the Vice Chair.
Thank you, thank you. And thank you, Johnny, and most people don't know on politics, just a real quick FYI. Commissioner Hernandez is the one who got me into politics many years ago. So, thank you, Johnny.
You're welcome. Congratulations.
And Johnny, you're doing a great job. It's just on Commissioner Carbajal, this is her fourth year of being on the commission and you know, it's
Absolutely.
Doing a great job.
Absolutely.
We all are, we all are, though.
Very good. Congratulations, Francis, you're well deserved. You've been working very hard on the commission. I've seen you grow. I've seen your growth on the commission and your knowledge of the planning department and how you've been so well-prepared when you come to the meetings. Whether or not we concur on the item or not, you've always been very gracious, and I appreciate that very much.
Thank you, Ken, with your leadership. You've taught me while all the commissioners have, and that means a lot to me. We go back many years, but all of you gentlemen, it is my honor to be on this commission with you. You are all informative. And Wayne and everybody in the planning department knows I'm your number one cheerleader, so thank you. Go planning.
Yes, that is an absolute true statement, and we do appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
That being said, the baton will be passed to the newly appointed Chair Jimenez.
Thank you, Ms. Cavial. Moving on to item number eight. Public hearing continued from February twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, planning commission meeting. Category exempt, CEQA guidelines, section one five zero six one, zoning text amendment, water pumping and treatment plant in the M-two zone. I would like to call upon Assistant Planner Claudia Jimenez to speak and to please present item number eight.
If I can have some sharing, if I can share my screen, I don't have that option to do that. I'm disabled. Thank you. Good evening, planning commissioners and members of the audience and city attorney. Tonight I present you item number eight, zone text amendment, water pumping and treatment plants. Ordinance number eleven oh two, and it's continued from February twenty-third, twenty twenty-two P C meeting. The applicant is Omega OU two LLC with de Maximus. A little background on the request. But water treatment is defined as any process that improves the quality of water to make it appropriate for specific end use. This currently, the city zoning ordinance allows permitted uses from less intensive zoning to locate into a higher intensive zoning, meaning from the M L to the M one, the M two. However, the same consideration is not made for conditional uses. Each zone has a list of conditional uses without any consideration to allow conditional uses that are listed in a less intensive zone. So currently, water treatment plants are permitted only in the M one line manufacturing zones after a conditional use permit has been granted. And so why is it listed as a C, why is a CUP required in the M one for this type of use? For the possibility of hazardous chemicals, noise, odor, and aesthetics. So a little background, the staff surveyed other cities to see how they classified water pumping and treatment plants. And one of the findings that we did find was the nearest one in Pico Rivera called Albert Robles Center for Water Recycling and Environmental Learning. And they were located within the industrial plant development, and they also did require a conditioning use permit. The proposed zone text amendment would read as follows, Santa Fe Springs Municipal Code, Chapter one five five zoning. Per section one five five point two four three, conditional uses, the following usage shall be permitted in the M two heavy manufacturing zone only after a valid condition use permit has been first issued. It would fall under letter J, also as the following, and number twenty-seven as a water pumping and treatment plant. And water pumping and treatment plants, as mentioned recently, is already conditioned use activity in the M one zone, and the proposed zone text amendment is simply adding the use to the M two zone. The general plan consistency, the Z T A is consistent with the following goals and policies of the Santa Fe Springs general plan under circulation, conservation in open space, and land uses. And within circulation, you have your goals, which is sustainable and reliable water supply. And the policy is C twelve point five, water quality comply with all applicable water quality standards. Conservation in open space, the goal is clean surface and water drainage and groundwater, and the policy is C O S four point one, groundwater supply remediation, clean local groundwater to safe conditions, and land use under goal for industrial businesses that stimulate economic development and job growth. And the policy falls under L U two point two, expand industrial base, responsible manage and minimize environmental impacts locally and regionally. So CEQA environmental review pursuant to section one five zero six one B three of the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA guidelines, staff finds the activity to be exempt from CEQA as a common sense rule. So no possibility that the activity will have a significant effect on the environment. And if planning commission agrees, staff intends to follow a notice of exemption. Public hearing notices, they were noticed in the Video Daily News on February eleventh, twenty twenty-two. And again, it was continued from February twenty-third's P C meeting, and as of today, no comments or inquiries have been received. And finally, staff recommendations find that the proposed amendment, the city zoning ordinance is consistent with the city's general plan. Find the project exempt from CEQA, adopt resolution two oh eight dash twenty twenty-two, and recommend that the city council approve and adopt ordinance number eleven twenty-two. And that concludes my presentation. I did inform the applicant. Unfortunately, I did not hear a response back from them, so I'm not sure they're here tonight for any questions. And I have a raised hand, so there might be questions.
Thank you, Assistant Planner Claudia Jimenez. Do any of the commissioners have any questions on this item?
Commissioner Carbajal, none.
Commissioner Hernandez, we have zoned for M one in use currently.
That is correct.
Where's that location at?
In the M one zone, anywhere in the M one zone, you're through a conditional use permit, this type of use is permitted in that with the conditions permit. We don't have one at the moment. Quang, if you want to sit, and I don't believe that we have a water treatment plant in that zone as of yet, but it is currently permitted in that zone.
And then we're looking onto zone M two?
Heavy manufacturing, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the commissioners?
Chair, Mr. Chair, I have one question, and I may have missed this, I apologize, it was already stated. But we do have an applicant. Where is this site located?
It would be on the corner of Telegraph and Santa Fe Springs Road.
Right on the corner?
No, I believe, Santa Fe Springs Road at the very far back end of that empty lot, so I don't have a physical address yet.
Yeah, the confusion may be, Commissioner, is that this is one of four buildings that are proposed on the former Brightburn site at the northwest corner of of Santa Fe Springs Road and Telegraph Road. If you were to drive by, you would see a lot of and there used to be a lot of activities occurring because they're re-abandoning the wells. So there are four buildings that's proposed. This is the foremost naughtily building, so there's two proposed on Santa Fe Springs Road and two smaller buildings along Telegraph Road.
Okay, so it's going to be set back, it's not going to be visible from the street, and it sounds like it's going to be an all indoor?
If I may, what's before you tonight is simply the zone text amendment. This is just to allow the type of use anywhere in the M two zone via a conditional use permit. The applicant will at a future date submit for that conditional use permit, and that'll come before you later.
No, and I understand that. My point was, I was getting at was I don't want to go ahead and approve something if there's already a site that they want to put something. You know, it may not be the right site in my mind, but you know, you've answered my question, so I thank you.
Yeah, it is tucked away.
Any other questions from the commissioners?
If I can further clarify, you know, there will be a subsequent conditional use permit application filed for the proposed land use, and that will come before the planning commission at a later date. Should the zone text amendment be?
Well, well, I, well, this, it's related to the property. When are they going to start building the buildings there? I know this isn't on here, but when do they plan on construction?
Well, this, the proposed text amendment that will allow this eventually, if approved, will allow the project to move forward. The building that will come before you later on is the only building on that side that does not have a well underneath it or on the parcel itself. So this was originally meant to be sold off as four buildings, but this building will be the first to be constructed. They are still working on re-abandoning the wells, which I imagine probably will be completed maybe by the end of this year. So they have to do all of that first before the other three buildings can be constructed.
Okay, sorry about getting off on a little tangent there.
No, that's fine. It's a, it's a very good question. You want to see the relationship between what we're approving now and what's to come in the future, so that's very understandable.
Thank you.
Yes, great question, Bill. Any other commissioners? Hearing no one else, I would like to open the public hearing at six twenty-six. And I would like to call upon the applicants, if they wish to speak, to please use the raise hand function at this time. And if so, please state your name and city of residence for the record and address.
Good evening, my name is Jack Keane, I represent the settling work defendants, the Omega OU two LLC. And we are, the reason, I guess, your, the planning commission is discussing this topic this evening. So we plan to install a groundwater pump and treat remedy in our property we purchased there on the northeast corner of the Oil Springs property. And I'm available to answer any questions you have specifically about our project. Commissioner Arnold, I heard your questions, and I can answer those if you like.
Thank you. Do any commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
So our building will be, our treatment plant process will be inside of a building that we're working through the entitlement process with the, with other city staff, sorry. And so you won't see anything from the outside. Our building will conform architecturally to other requirements that that currently exist in the existing entitlement that we're piggybacking on for our specific entitlements. So you won't see them other than
Chairperson Jimenez, I do have one question, a follow-up question for the applicant.
Okay.
In this water treatment processing, is there any heat used that would generate any steam or anything that would be coming out of the roof through a vent?
No, there would be no, there will be no visible steam or other emissions from our treatment process.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there anyone from the audience wishing to speak on this matter? If so, please use the raise hand function.
We do have one speaker.
Oh, before that person speak, just for clarification. After we asked whether or not the commissioners had any question on the item, and that was done, did we open up the public hearing?
Yes, we already opened.
Okay, we already went through, okay, sorry.
Please state your name and city of residence for the record. And note, there is a three-minute time limit for each speaker.
Hi, good evening. Sorry for the delay. I was just given the unmute rights. My name's Irma Wietron. I'm a resident of Santa Fe Springs, and actually, thank you for commissioners for asking some of the questions that I had with regard to this item, and I think the applicant clarified. I wanted a little more clarification on how if the water is piped in, or is it delivered by trucks? I was wanting to get clarification how, how that works, if I will. That's the only question that I have at this time. Thank you.
I think and the city, the attorney can clarify for me, but this is on the a zoning text amendment, Katia, would it be appropriate for those questions now or when the development plan of conditional use permit comes before the planning commission?
Yeah, so the public hearing is actually for the zone text amendment. I apologize, I believe the confusion is that we have the applicant present, but it's not before us at this time. Right now, it's just a matter of whether or not the planning commission wants to approve the zone text amendment, and then as far as any future, you know, water treatment plant, that is going to come before us at a future time, which of course you're open, you're, you're welcome to go ahead and make any comment, questions or whatnot at that time. But you can still make a comment, just, it's just with respect, they're not going to address, the applicant isn't here to address the particular application because it's not before us.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have additional time, I believe. Thank you for that clarification. I was a little confused. I did understand at the beginning, this was a text amendment, but there was a lot of questions with site-specific discussion during this text amendment item, so that's why I thought I would go ahead and ask that question, but I don't have any further questions. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. Planning Secretary, is there any other raised hands?
No, Chair Jimenez, no further raised hands.
Okay, are there any comments submitted via email for item number eight?
No, we did not receive any via email either.
Okay, great. Moving forward, I'd like to close the public hearing at six thirty-two. Is there a motion and a second for item number eight?
Commissioner Carbajal, I move.
Commissioner Hernandez, I'll second.
Moved by Commissioner Carbajal, Commissioner Carbajal, and second by Commissioner Hernandez. Planning Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Most definitely, Chair Jimenez. Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Rounds?
Aye.
Commissioner Arnold?
Aye.
Vice Chair, Vice Chair Carbajal?
Aye.
Chair Jimenez?
Aye.
So passes five zero.
So ordered.
Okay, the commission's action on this item shall become effective fourteen days after receipt by the applicant of written the commission's action. The applicant and/or any other interested party may file an appeal to commission's action to the city council, and the appeal must be in writing or filed with the city clerk within the previously mentioned fourteen-day period.
Thank you. Item number nine, new business. Sequel guideline section 15301, class one and 15303, class three modification permit, case number 1351. A request to reserve but not provide ten required parking stalls and instead temporarily use said area for outdoor storage on property located at 11120 Norwalk Boulevard in the M- dash two dash BP Heavy Manufacturing Buffering Parking Zone. I would like to call upon Associate Planner Vince Velasco, please present item number nine.
Thank you, Chairperson Jimenez. Give me one moment to share my screen. Uh, someone could confirm that you do see the presentation?
Yes, I see it.
Okay.
I see it.
Okay, great, thank you. As indicated, uh, the item tonight is modification permit case number 1351. Uh, the subject property is located at 11120 Norwalk Boulevard near the intersection of Norwalk and Lakeland Road. The general plan land use designation is light industrial. The current zoning is M2 BP, which is a heavy manufacturing buffer parking zone. And the applicant is Goodrich Corporation branded as Collins Aerospace. This slide here is simply for reference to illustrate where the subject property is located as well as identify the adjacent property to the east with a little overhang to the north. Uh, why this is important is because in this slide, it'll illustrate a lease agreement that the subject property has had with their neighbor over the last several years uh, to lease out parking to the north and to lease out storage area to the east. The adjacent property to the east, they are, uh, they have changed ownership and will go through a redevelopment in the near future. So the subject property has lost these lease agreements. So their operations have needed to change when it comes to parking and storage area. As mentioned, the request before you is to reserve but not provide ten required parking spaces and instead use that area for temporary outdoor storage. Here is the proposed site plan and the, uh, just to give reference, the orientation of the site plan has changed. Support is now towards the far left-handier screen. The proposed outdoor storage is 450 square feet highlighted here in red. There's also a proposal for indoor storage for 11,440 square feet. That is also highlighted in red. Should be noted that the required number of parking spaces for this site is eighty-nine parking stalls and the applicant is proposing to provide seventy-nine parking stalls, therefore the deficiency of ten parking stalls. To give you some reference, I've provided setbacks or distances from the property line. There is about fifty-seven to fifty-eight feet from the east side. About forty-two and a half feet from the south and approximately two hundred and forty-five feet from Norwalk Boulevard. Now, there is going to be a transition period between planning commission approval, should you approve tonight, and when they obtain their building permits. Therefore, the applicant has proposed a temporary storage plan. Uh, this temporary storage will be located along the Easterly property. It'll be about approximately five hundred and thirty-two square feet. Uh, their lease agreement is month-to-month and so therefore, uh, they have still the opportunity to provide fifteen stalls on the area to the north, the gravel area. And this is intended to only last approximately two to three months, again, while that transition occurs and they're able to construct the proposed storage area. Speaking of the proposed canopy structure, this is what it will look like. And the storage area will contain hazardous waste, including corrosive and oil. But they will be stored in accordance with regulatory regulations and as approved by Cooper. You may have noticed a ninety-day holding reference on the proposed plans and that references the length of time that hazardous waste can be, uh, can remain on site before being removed for proper disposal. For your considerations, the applicant has provided their employee roster and you'll notice that the peak day of employees is Wednesdays. The time is from seven AM to one PM. They have fifty-eight employees. As previously mentioned, the applicant will be providing a total of seventy-nine parking stalls. This provides a surplus of twenty-one parking stalls during the peak hour or otherwise a twenty-six percent surplus for invited guests or other periods of unusual parking needs. And this also assumes that everyone would drive independently. With that consideration, the applicant has also proposed a carpooling program, something that doesn't clearly exist, but will help alleviate the parking demand on site. This will potentially begin in April. This will be voluntary signup and the perks will not only be the desired parking spice spaces, but they will also be entered into a drawing, one extra day of paid time off. In addition, the applicant has provided an alternative parking plan should, should the need arise for additional parking or should the applicant go away? The applicant has illustrated that the deficient, uh, parking stalls can be provided on site with the removal of existing storage equipment. And lastly, for your consideration, the applicant has purchased an additional property at 11705 Will Lake Street and they will use that property for additional storage and office area. However, it is one point five miles from the Norwalk facility and that's why it cannot be used as, you know, additional parking location. Uh, and also the hazardous waste area is required to be relocated on the Norwalk side and, and cannot be relocated to this Will Lake property. This will also help alleviate the parking demand with ten employees that currently work at the Norwalk facility being relocated to this site on Will Lake. For Sequel, the project was deemed categorically exempt pursuant to class one and class three as the use is existing. The storage activities are existing, just being relocated and the proposed project will not result any additional building shortage. The hearing itself was noticed to adjacent properties on March third. There were a total of seven properties noticed. We did receive one response and it was to the, it was representatives, uh, of the property owner to the south as they were requesting information about the storage area and the storage materials. As of earlier today, uh, those concerns have been resolved. Staff recommends that the planning commission find and determine that the project is categorically exempt, as mentioned. Approve mod thirteen fifty-one and adopt resolution two oh nine dash twenty twenty-one, subject to the conditions, uh, as attached to the resolution. I do have the applicant in the audience. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Velasco. Do any of the commissioners have any questions on this item?
Commissioner Carvajal, none.
Commissioner Hernandez, none.
Commissioner Arnold, none.
Chair Rounds, done.
My South Chair, Jimenez, none. Um, that being said, could I get a motion in a second for item number nine?
I will so, so move that, uh, we go on with item number nine. Approve item number nine.
Commissioner Carvajal, second.
Motion by Commissioner Hernandez, second by Commissioner Carvajal, or Vice Chair Carvajal, I'm sorry. Could I get a roll call vote, please? Planning Secretary?
Most definitely, Chair Jimenez. Commissioner Arnold.
Aye.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Aye.
Commissioner Rounds.
Aye.
Vice Chair Carvajal.
Aye.
Chair Jimenez.
Aye.
Passes five zero.
So ordered. Planning Attorney Katia Furlik, please?
Yes, the commission's action on this item shall become effective fourteen days, um, after receipt by the applicant of written notice of the commission's action and the applicant and/or other interested party may file an appeal of the commission's action to the city council. The appeal must be in writing and filed with the city clerk within the previously mentioned fourteen day period.
Thank you. Item number ten, presentations. Senate Bill seven four three, implementation. I would like to call upon Assistant Director Kwang Nguyen to please present item number ten.
Thank you, Chair Jimenez. We have a quick presentation before you tonight, but before that, uh, I, I just wanted to give you a little background. Uh, if you're not familiar with SB seven forty-three, which was passed in two thousand and thirteen, it, it changed the way transportation impacts are measured through the California Environmental Quality Act. Uh, essentially it removed the level of service as a primary measure. Um, and subsequently, uh, vehicle miles traveled was selected as the metric, uh, to measure and comply with SB seven forty-three. Um, the city, uh, in response to SB, uh, seven forty-three, we did, um, issue a, uh, RFP to select a consultant to prepare VNT guidelines. Um, through a competitive process, uh, Fear and Peers was selected as the consultant to help the city prepare a VNT methodology, uh, and evaluate transportation impacts consistent with the SEQUA requirements. Um, and on October nineteenth, uh, a professional service agreement was executed which triggered a kickoff meeting between the consultants and staff. Uh, we've been working behind the scenes to try to gather, uh, some data but also to discuss vehicles and the objectives of, uh, this, the thresholds. So one of the primary goals that staff had moving forward is, is to make sure that the planning commission, um, is continually updated and also, um, provided with, uh, an opportunity to, to, to provide comments and feedback throughout the process. So we have asked, uh, tonight for Fear and Peers to provide you with a, a brief presentation to kind of give you a, a quick uh, summary of, uh, SB seven forty-three and, and how we plan to implement the, the thresholds. So with that said, without further ado, I do have Sarah Brandonberg from Fear and Peers who will be providing you with the presentation tonight. Let me give her, uh, the capabilities. Sarah, you've been made co-host, so if you'd like to share, otherwise I also have the presentation on my end.
I, I'll go ahead and share. Thank you. I just got the notification. Okay, perfect. Um, everyone sees my screen with the slides. If you don't, feel free to stop me. Great. Good evening, everyone. I'm Sarah Brandonberg with Fear and Peers. Um, we're really excited to be here tonight to work with your really great planning team on implementing these new guidelines under Senate Bill seven forty-three. So we do just have more of an introductory presentation for you tonight as we're getting started on this process in Santa Fe Springs. We wanted to provide an overview of what SB seven forty-three is all about, why the state is implementing this new guidance, provide a little bit of context for what it means in Santa Fe Springs and then we'll share with you our next steps for proceeding through this process. So Senate Bill seven forty-three, it's really an update to how transportation impacts are measured under SEQUA. Um, and it only applies to new, new development projects, so really projects that you see coming through planning commission, anything you've approved in the past, anything on the ground today. Senate Bill seven forty-three does not affect. It's just as we're approving and reviewing new development projects in the city, the state is asking us to look at the impacts of transportation under a new lens. And so the way we used to look at transportation impacts before Senate Bill seven forty-three is really considering the impacts a project would have to drivers. So if I'm, if we're adding cars, for example, to a congested intersection in the city, um, and a project would even make that intersection more, more congested and I'm a driver, right? I would feel that impact of additional congestion at that location. What the state has said is that that impact to the driver is not really an environmental impact. It's still something that is an important consideration as we're approving projects. But when it comes to the environmental impact for transportation, it's more the, um, measure of driving in and of itself, right? So if I'm getting in my car and I'm driving just a mile down the street to go to the grocery store, there's one impact to that trip. But if I'm getting in my car and commuting thirty miles into downtown LA for my job, that has a greater impact on the environment, right? I'm spending more car in my ti- uh, more time in my car driving. And so that, um, is really one of the fundamental reasons why the state has asked us to really shift this perspective, consider the true impact of getting in our cars and driving and the way we can do that is using a metric, um, called vehicle miles of travel. So it's literally the number of miles that everyone spends in their vehicles, uh, driving around for their, their daily business. So before we jump into, um, VNT in more detail, we just, we did wanna do a reminder of how we have been looking at transportation impacts in Santa Fe Springs, but really this is a very similar process all throughout LA County. So in the past, we would prepare a traffic impact study or circulation study. The map here is from a project in your city way back in twenty eighteen for a new warehouse project where they looked at eight intersections. Um, but the typical process we would go through is look at the trip generation of the projects, how many, how many trips it would generate on a daily basis and also the number of trips that would generate during the peak morning and afternoon commute periods. Where are those trips going? Um, where do we expect the origin and destination to be? How, um, what, what route do we think they will take to get there, um, which is how we develop all of our projections for the nearby steady intersections? And then we would typically look at roadway operations under existing conditions and also under future conditions where we account for other related development nearby or other development that's envisioned, um, in your general plan. And as part of this process, we would look at the effects on intersection operations and then we would identify improvements. Are there intersection improvements that are needed? Are there traffic signal upgrades that are needed? Um, anything with site access, is any safety concerns that should be addressed? So we would go through this whole process which gave the city, um, very important information and this is not going away, right? So this, when it comes to good planning in the city, you're still going to want to know how does this project affect our local operations? That will still be addressed. We're, we're helping the city envision what that process looks like going forward. Um, but when it comes to SEQUA, we now need to consider vehicle miles of travel. So going back to why the state made this change, if we, um, consider a level of service as really a, a way to analyze traffic flow, um, one thing that level of service does not do is it doesn't give us a good idea of, um, more of the multimodal nature of an environment. So if you consider, for example, that photo on the right side of your screen, right? This may be in more of a downtown mixed-use environment, lots of people walking, maybe biking, um, maybe parking their car once and visiting multiple uses. From a level of service perspective, you can see that there's a lot of cars driving on here. You have to go pretty slow because there's a lot of, um, you know, people parking in the adjacent lane, probably, you know, mid-block crosswalks. And so again, from a level of service perspective, that might have a grade of level of service F. But from more of a environmental and public health perspective, it can be seen as a, a rich environment where a lot of people want to be and a more active envi- environment when it comes to public health too, giving people other means than, um, just driving in their car. And that's just a comparison to the photo on the left there where we have lots of wide-open roads. This might get a grade of level of service A, um, but not a lot of activity. Probably everyone traveling in this area again is getting in their cars and needing to drive based on the land use context. So going forward, we really envision transportation studies in your city being a two-pronged process. So the first step in the process will be to consider So the first step in the process will be to consider the CEQA impacts, which will be based on the metric of VNT. The second type of study or second prong of that process is still considering roadway operations. So looking at the level of service and traffic operations during those peak commute periods, looking at the impacts of truck traffic. We know that there's a lot of industrial uses and sensitivity around truck impacts of the city that will continue to be an important part of the process. And then just looking at overall site access and operations. So are the driveways that are being proposed going to be safe and adequately serve the project? As an example, that can also include things like parking, like we were just talking about in that previous project. I have about a short, less than one minute video here. That talks about VNT and provides a little more explanation, and then we will dive into more details on VNT too. So let's hope this works. And can you hear the sound on that? Yes.
Yes, we could.
Okay, perfect, perfect, I won't narrate then.
What is VNT? VNT or vehicle miles traveled refers to the distance that a car travels regardless of how many passengers are in the car. So this car traveling one mile would generate one VNT. And four vehicles traveling ten miles would generate forty VNT. To understand how much VNT a person generates on a typical weekday, it's useful to mount their travel throughout the day. In this example, Jess starts the day at home, drives to the coffee shop two miles away. And then heads to work, which is ten miles from the coffee shop. After a day at the office, Jess returns home eleven miles away. Later, Jess heads out and drives one mile to the gas station to fill up before driving another three miles to the grocery store. And then makes the two-mile trip back home. By adding together the miles driven, it has shown that Jess has generated twenty-nine VNT for the entire day. This VNT can be further categorized into the individual trip purposes that motivated each layer of trip. VNT can be organized into three typical trip purposes. Home to work, or HW. Home to other, or HO. And other to other, or OO. This organization is helpful in understanding that trips to and from work tend to generate the most VNT. Because people are willing to drive longer distances as the benefit of the trip increases.
Okay, sounds like that was a good introduction to VNT and how we measure it and consider the different land use types and travel characteristics of those land uses. And so, again, going back to why we're making the shift from level of service to VNT. The state had three primary goals when they made this change. It was reducing greenhouse gas emissions, encouraging infill development, and then also improving public health through increasing transportation. Such as walking and biking, so creating a little more robust environments for people to not always have to drive in their cars. So when the state was developing and implementing Senate Bill seven forty-three, they had to come up with a new metric. There were, Kwang mentioned that this bill was passed back in twenty thirteen. It took five to six years for the state to even determine how to move forward with this change. And part of that process was developing what should our new metric be? So that new metric of VNT, now it seems very simple, it's here, we're looking at it, but this has been a long. Very long process for the state to come up with these new guidelines. And select the metric that they thought would best measure the true impacts of transportation on the environment. So when they were thinking of VNT, they wanted to make sure we were promoting development and multimodal transportation networks, again, encouraging walking, biking, and also taking transit. Increasing the diversity of land uses, and then also making sure that other environmental impacts of noise such as our EIRs. When we consider noise impacts or air pollution and safety impacts, making sure that those are continued to be addressed in the CEQA context. The state and Air Resources Board did several years of emission modeling to determine how much we should be reducing VNT to meet the state climate goals. So this slide is from a couple of years ago now, but really informed the state's decision and recommendation. That we should be reducing VNT on a per-person basis by about fifteen percent. So in the modeling they did, looking at light duty vehicles, which is most of the vehicles we have on the road, it doesn't include the larger trucks. But the day-to-day autos and some of the smaller delivery trucks that, again, we needed to reduce VNT by about sixteen point eight percent. They took all of that modeling and said, going forward, when jurisdictions are considering new projects. Let's think of those projects and the VNT they generate. And then the goal is that any new project coming in will generate VNT on that per-person basis. That's fifteen percent lower than the VNT we're generating in that area now. So over time, creating more efficient land use mixes and reducing VNT gradually over time as well. So when is a VNT analysis required? This will apply to all of the projects coming into the city, they'll need to consider, do they have a VNT impact? But they, not all projects will have to do a VNT analysis. So the state did give us a list of typical exemptions that can be made from needing to study VNT further. One is just the project size, so if we have a small project, a project that's generating less than a hundred and ten daily trips. We don't need to do a VNT analysis. If a project has locally serving retail uses that are less than fifty thousand square feet. It's assumed to not have a VNT impact, that is because the idea behind locally serving retail is more people have the opportunity to shop locally. And that should help to reduce VNT over time by having shorter trips instead of having to, you know, drive five miles to the grocery store, for example. Also, if a project's in a low VNT area or a VNT efficient area, this is something that will be helping the city to determine through this process. What areas of the city are already considered VNT efficient based on the state's definition. And projects in those areas would not need to do a VNT analysis. And then also if a project's in a transit priority area, so this may be more of an option in the future as transit increases in the city. But if a project's within a fifteen, about a fifteen-minute walk, or usually define that it's about a quarter mile. Distance from a transit line with at least fifteen-minute service during the peak commute hours. That project also would not have a VNT impact. Otherwise, if a project doesn't meet these definitions, it just need, we need to study VNT and determine if there are any impacts. So the way we get VNT data for the city, and this is very similar to what other jurisdictions and your neighbors are doing. Is the Southern California Association of Governments has a travel demand forecasting model. They update this model every four years as part of the regional transportation plan and sustainable community strategy. And we can get VNT data from this model, and the reason it's a really great starting point for collecting VNT data is we really do need to consider. Where, where is our, where are our trips starting from and where are they going, right? Somebody living in Santa Fe Springs, for example, may commute into downtown LA, so we want to capture that full trip length. You know, conversely, maybe somebody working in Santa Fe Springs lives in Riverside, and again, we want to capture that full trip length. So we really having this regional platform to work with is a really good starting point for us. We also have a version of the SCAG model that we refined as part of your general plan within the last year or so. And so it's a really great starting point, we have the latest data in the model for the city, we have the general plan built out information for the city. And again, we can use this to determine what is the current VNT per person in the city of Santa Fe Springs. Look at it for different land use types, and then that can help inform our process going forward. In addition to the SCAG model, we also look at census data, just to get a better understanding of how people travel within Santa Fe Springs now. And so what this graph is showing is that of about the eighty-five hundred people that live in the city. There are about a thousand people who live and work in the city. And another seventy-five hundred people who live in the city who are commuting outside of the city for work most days. And then we have a lot of people that commute into the city for work, so there are about almost sixty-five thousand jobs in the city. And again, a thousand of those come from people who live there, and the other nearly sixty-four thousand people are commuting in. And then from there, we can see how far people driving to commute into the city, or if they live there to commute out of the city. So if you're a resident in Santa Fe Springs, almost half of the residents commute less than ten miles. Another forty percent are between ten and twenty-five miles. And then the remaining, you commute over twenty-five miles a day. Similarly, a little bit longer trip lengths for people commuting into the city. But of those nearly sixty-four thousand people commuting in, about forty percent travel less than ten miles. Another thirty-two percent or so are within that ten to twenty-four mile range. And then you can see twenty-five miles or greater, you know, up to almost twenty-five percent or so of people commuting into the city have very long commutes. This data also comes from census information, and it's interesting to see just vehicle ownership in the city. So most people who live in the city for their household size have two vehicles per household. What's interesting though, if we break it down from, it's pretty typical, right? The United States, most households have two cars, Santa Fe Springs, most households have two cars. But what we did see in Santa Fe Springs is there are fewer households with one vehicle. Or no vehicles in compared to the country average and more, the stark blue line, more households that have three or more vehicles. Than we typically see, so especially in that four-plus vehicle category nationwide, it's around seven percent. And you know, just under twenty percent in Santa Fe Springs. We also looked at commute times, so most Santa Fe Springs residents have a commute time of about thirty minutes. Which you see right in the middle of our chart here. If you compare that to the US average, most workers have between a fifteen and twenty-minute commute. However, that thirty-minute average we see in your city is pretty typical for LA. In general, the cities we work with in LA and the county has longer commutes. So this, this part is pretty typical of what we see with your neighbors. And then we also looked at how people are traveling, what mode of transportation are they taking? And so we had about eighty-three percent, again, this is based on census data, about eighty-three percent of travel is driving alone in your car. Almost ten percent is carpooling, so more than one person in the car. We had two and a half percent of people working from home, I should say, this was pre-pandemic, this is twenty nineteen data, so I would expect this to be higher. We'll see what happens over the course of the year as businesses start to open up more. A little less than two percent were taking transit, similar percentage with walking and biking. But this map here, we're working on with the city to get an updated transit map with Metro made some recent service changes. They've been going through a pretty extensive rerouting and timing process, so we want to update the transit map. Confirm those areas that have fifteen-minute or better service that we can use in our ongoing VNT studies. So this is the process that we're going through, we've really started with background information and data gathering, some of that from the SCAG model, some from census data, like I shared. The next step of what we'll be doing is looking at some pilot projects, so we're working with the city to just. Take, get a better sense of the type of development coming in, and then helping the city staff understand with this new VNT requirement. How would we analyze that project and look at potential VNT impacts, what could mitigation measures be? And so it's really nice to have these test pilot projects upfront to make sure as we're writing our VNT guidelines for the city. And creating traffic study guidelines going forward, that they've really been somewhat vetted through these pilot project testing. And then we were, helped the city define their VNT methodology and thresholds, along with mitigation options for projects. And then all of that culminates with documentation of the transportation assessment guidelines, which will have VNT. As well as some of the local level of service requirements that we talked about earlier. And then we will come back to Planning Commission and City Council as well to share the final recommendations. And have our VNT thresholds approved, and then move forward with implementation. And so we're excited to get going on this process. We've made a lot of progress so far, and again, the, all the work that was done for the general plan has been a really excellent starting point for our work. A lot of cities have started from step zero, and I feel like we're a couple of steps ahead, just getting started. And yeah, I'll turn it back over to Kwang to see if he wanted to make any final comments, Kwang.
Thank you, Sarah, so I don't have any final comments, but I do want to open it up for the commissioners if you have any questions. I know this is a lot to soak in, you know, staff admittedly is also also trying to soak this VNT threshold concept in as well.
Is there any questions for the, from the commission?
I have one just point of information. In your VNT studies, you have the CEQA factors, right, that are important in your studies? Now, how does that, how do they differentiate now with the electric vehicles versus the gas vehicles in those studies?
That is a great question, and when the state developed the guidelines, they were very clear that VNT means all cars. So the, they're saying a solution to reducing greenhouse gas emissions. One solution is to have more electric cars. But also, even if we keep converting our vehicles to the electric vehicle fleet, we still should also be reducing our vehicle miles of travel. So it's not really a one-for-one trade-off, so when we, we think about how are we going to, like, let's say we have a project that has a VNT impact. We need to really think about how can we reduce the number of vehicle miles traveled that are generated by that project. Regardless of whether it's an electric vehicle or, you know, an SUV.
Okay, thank you so much.
Any other questions?
I have no questions, but I just want to thank Sarah and staff for providing this information. It's, I don't think it's the, it's anything that the average person would ever think about. And, but it's very interesting, and I want to see where it goes from here, but thank you for all of that.
This is Commissioner Arnold. And I mean, this is a big chunk to take a bite out of on the first time around. And it is going to be very, very important for the city. And especially the planning commissioners and planning staff. To be able to understand and, and be able to. Excuse me. And be able to understand what, what all of this stuff means. I mean, just going through this last twenty, twenty-five minutes. If anybody can understand a half or a quarter of what was mentioned in that time. It's, it would be amazing. I would suggest that the staff meet with the consultant, and the consultant and staff meet with the planning commission. Several times, study sessions, so that people will be able to understand. That they don't want the community to be turned in to that, they showed that two-street situation, right? One with hardly any cars on it, no, no parking. And the other one with double parking and people riding around on tricycles and bicycles. And, and just a conglomeration of, of people in the street. I'm pretty sure that most people that live in Santa Fe Springs don't want to live in a neighborhood that is going to be so congested. And then another item that you need to consider too. Is the state has mandated. Has a mandatory requirement. Of having so many ADUs per unit, you can go up to a minimum of four ADUs per R1 site. And one of the things that the city, that the state is trying to promote, and therefore the city is required to promote. Is the, is increasing the density of the. is the, is increasing the density of the housing in Santa Fe Springs. Uh, one of the reasons that I brought up a more downtown area and staying with the residential within the uh railroad tracks that encircle the si- the residential area from the south up around the the, to the east side and then to the north of the city is to uh utilize those areas as a mixed-use type areas, so we can maintain those, those um trends. You're going to end up with, you know, three and maybe four or five-story buildings in that area. I don't know if everybody understands that or is wanting to to identify with that. But by doing that, we're going to be able to um maintain our our residential areas in combination with the commercial and keep the areas that are more heavier commercial and 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 manufacturing zones out into the perimeters. So I would suggest that, first off, not go running out the the door with your hair on fire, trying to get something done. Uh, I would suggest that you take your time, that you work with what I consider one of the best planning staffs in Southern California. Develop what you want your city to be and don't let somebody as a consultant with just a bunch of mumbo jumbo come in and say, you need this and you need this and the state has to do that and this and that, so. You know, this um may be one of my last meetings, but I uh I vehemently disagree with what the state is trying to do with our uh cities. They're trying to ruin our cities and um I I am vehemently opposed to it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner Arnold. Any other questions?
Commissioner Carvahal here. Um, on the percentage-wise uh stating that over forty, what, I think it was forty-some uh were traveling over ten miles, do those numbers now consist of COVID? Because now so many people working from home and even though things are opening up, a lot of companies have given the opportunities for the employees to stay at work at home, so that would try to alleviate the traffic as well.
Yeah, thank you for that question. It's a great question. All of the data I was sharing was twenty nineteen data, so it is pre-pandemic data. And yes, we will see, we know that that has shifted in the past two years. And what remains to be seen is how much it, you know, continues to shift going forward.
Thank you, and I appreciate those comments by Commissioner Arnold. I think we all are looking at that with mo- the idea of maybe more multifacetic ma- uh facet buildings where, you know, you have the store on the bottom and then the townhomes or condos on top to try to alleviate. Uh, but I like the idea of also, let's not rush it through. Let's make sure uh the planning commission and the council know what is going on as well as the community and get their insight on it as well, and I appreciate those comments.
Uh, one, one other thing I'd like to to mention about Ms. Brandenburg. I I worked with a gentleman named Willie Brandenburg. He was from Kentucky. He uh owned Ryan Construction here in Santa Fe Springs for about thirty-five years. He passed away in the uh early uh two thousands. And uh, uh, he, your, your name, Brandon Berg, it's, a lot of people think of Vandenberg, but Brandon Berg is another um famous gate in uh, in Berlin. And uh, he was a quite a mentor to me and just seeing that that name put a smile on my face. So, welcome to the city.
Thank you. Um, is there any other questions from the commissioners? And I have no questions. I would like to thank uh Sarah Brandenburg and Kwan Nugent for this very informative presentation. Thank you. Moving on to item number eleven, a presentation of twenty twenty-one planning and development acop- accomplishments. I would like to call upon Assistant Director Kwan Nugent to please present item number eleven.
Thank you, Chairman Jimenez, members of the planning commission. Um, a- as you recall, uh, staff originally intended to provide the commission with this presentation at your February twenty-third meeting. And due to some technical difficulties, a decision was made to postpone it to to this meeting in March. Um, we're get, I I'm happy to say that that I do have uh some technical help and i- in some younger minds and hopefully we can get something for you today, so bear with me as I try to share the presentation. Thank you.
And I guess when you said younger, you obviously won't be referring to me, right?
Hopefully you guys could see the slide presentation. I'm gonna start it now, so hopefully it works. Oh, no.
We just not hearing the music, Quang. Remember you're supposed to enable audio.
So when you go to share screen, there's a little tab at the bottom that says share with sound.
Yeah, and that's from the old guy. Well, Vince did say something too, so.
So is Vince the young guy?
I think Jimmy might be.
Younger, youngish.
Yeah, if you guys want to come over and show me where the enabled audio is, I I can't find it.
What happened?
I don't know.
Quang, it stopped. Oh, but you know. Okay.
One, one more try, one more try.
Yeah, just one more. Just when I was about to get up off of my seat because of the music, then it stops.
I was gonna start singing.
Yeah, it started okay. It went through three of the slides. Okay, one more time, Quang.
It didn't work.
Okay, that's it. Okay, he tried.
Do you want me to try or you want to just push it?
No, no, let's leave it. It's seven twenty-four already. Well, I don't want to speak for the planning commission, I'm sorry. But I think we should just have an opportunity to do this ahead of time and walk out the bugs before we keep on trying, because this is a second time.
Three times the charm, so we'll get it next time.
Yes.
Yeah.
We can see it all on the big screen the next, when we meet in person.
Well, that's right, yes.
Yes, sir.
That is, that is what we were hoping for uh in February event to happen.
Okay, Madam Secretary.
Okay, so um item number twelve, announcements. Are there any commissioners that have an announcement that they would like to share?
Commissioner Carvahal, uh, this past Sunday, the Santa Fe Springs Women's Club held our quarter mania. I'd like to thank, um, he's always our silent donor, but I still like to give him props, Wayne Morrell, for donating graciously, and I appreciate that, sir. Um, congratulations, Gabriel, on your appointment for chairperson. It gets fabulous. Johnny, Ken, and Bill, it is my honor to serve with you on this commission. Hope everybody has a great St. Patty's Day. Still, please stay safe. Even though things are opening up, we still can't, we need to be vigilant and be ready, commissioners, because I'm going to be calling everybody. Santa Fe Springs Easter Pancake Breakfast, Sister Cities will be doing the pancake breakfast and I will be selling tickets, though I know you'd like to buy a lot of them. I maybe help out flip some pancakes while you're at it. And lastly, to Katya, I cannot believe you finished that K run and you're eight and a half months pregnant. Congratulations, lady.
Thank you.
Wow. Any other announcements?
I'd just like to say, uh, I appreciate all the help that you guys gave me this last year and the city council uh putting in uh for me to remain on the commission. I, I think we were able to get a couple of major projects um completed this year and uh I give you guys all the credit in uh hanging in there and and doing the job. Also, I want to tell everybody that, you know, uh, last last Wednesday, I got out of uh critical care at PIH and they brought me in an ambulance back home and I am now on hospice care. When I got home, I um I was really feeling bad and over this last week, especially over this last maybe three or four days, I have just come alive with amount of energy and amount of of uh purpose on my mind and I, I believe that I've hit a real big turnaround. So I appreciate all of your prayers and all of your thoughts. And I cannot appreciate the amount of accolades I have received from my players and June, in uh Little League and my high school players, my junior college players, all of the kids that I coached have reached out to me with a great amount of accolades and and prayers and stuff. And I cannot appreciate all of you all anymore. I, I have, I, I'm this biggest blessed man uh in the city. I, I just love you all and appreciate everything that you guys have done for me and for my family. Hopefully I'll be able to stick around for, for a little longer, but boy, I I don't think God has God has been great and he continues to be great and all of you all continue to be great. I, I appreciated everything that you've done and just uh anything that I can do for you in return, please, please contact me anytime. Thank you all, I love you.
Commissioner Arnold, um, let me say you you've been an inspiration and you continue to be an inspiration to me and others. And also, uh, congratulations also again to Commissioner Jimenez and Commissioner Carvahal.
Ken, uh, this is Bill. I want to thank you for your years of service um in so many committees on the, in the city and as the, as the chairperson uh of the planning commission, your wisdom, your knowledge has been valuable to all of us. I, you know, and the biggest thing for me is um our friendship. Ken and I were talking a couple of weeks ago that uh when we first met, we were actually enemies. And I say that in a funny way because we were both coaching at Metropolitan Little League. He was on the Phillies and I was on the Angels. So uh, that's the way our friendship started and it's, yeah, but it's not, it's grown each and every year. And um, again, Ken, I I can't even start to thank you for everything you've done. Um, and if there's anything you need from any of us, like, I can speak for the the, for the city staff and the other commissioners, um, anything you need, you know how to get ahold of us. In fact, I'll begin in touch with you again after this meeting, but I just uh, you know, the city and and just uh the number of lives that you, you have touched over your years of service. So I thank you for that, sir, and uh I wish you the best and uh you're, you are one hell of a fighter. I want to congratulate Commissioner Jimenez. I know you're gonna be a great leader. I'm looking forward to working with you and and the other planning commissioners and uh and Francis. Uh, Commissioner Carvahal, congratulations on your vice chair. I know that if uh Gabe isn't able to make a meeting, that you'll fill in and uh your knowledge and your wisdom and and also all the committees that you've served on. You know, I've got to uh be on many committees with both of you. And um, and Johnny, I just, I appreciate the fact now that all those years I saw you as a, as a worker for Santa Fe Springs, now we're working together for Santa Fe Springs and the residents and the business community. Uh, I've always respected you and always will, so. But Ken, I love you too, man. Love you too. Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
So Ken, um, I just want to thank you for all you have done for me. I was new to the commission and you took me under your wing and accepted me and, you know, we've talked and we're both baseball guys and I re- what touches me the most is the time that you came out to see my my team when we were maybe ten years old and you came out and told them clothes before you throws. And I still remember that and um you're just a very, you know, I I want to emulate the type of man that you are, a family man, a man of your word, a man of the city and um you know, words can't express the way I feel about you and I love you too, Ken, and thank you for all you have done for myself and the commission and the city. And you have touched so many people's lives. And in two thousand and eleven, you were my son's varsity baseball coach also, so. I think it was two thousand and twelve, around there. So thank you, Ken, and uh we'll be talking soon. And also I want to thank all my colleagues for, you know, having the faith in me to uphold this position. colleagues for, you know, having the faith in me to uphold this position. And thank you for the nominations. And we're all in this together. It doesn't matter who's chair, who's vice chair. We're all commissioners and we're all in it for the same, you know, same thing. And that's to make our city a great and better city. So thank you all and God bless. Love you, Ken.
Amen. Amen. Thank you.
Ken, this is Francis again. I just wanted to tell you that again, I care for you so much and you're just everything you've taught me and being nice to my family. And Michelle and I and Bentley are rooting for you and always praying for you. And, you know, I know there's separation of church and state, but I believe in Jesus. I believe in the player, the power of the Lord. And he's healing you every day and giving you strength, and that's what we rely on in Jesus' name.
Yes. Amen. Thank you so much. Well, I'll I'll be talking to y'all, y'all. So you take care and have a good evening and and I'll see you next next meeting, hopefully. Knock on wood. And and we'll keep this thing going, right? Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you, Ken. Are there any announcements from the staff?
I'd like to say a few words. First, I want to congratulate Chair Jimenez and Vice Chair Carvahal for your new appointments. I also want to tell Ken, Ken, you know, thank you for your commitment and your dedication to the city. It's a commitment that I think is unrivaled by anyone else. We do love you and we hope that God continues to look over you.
Thank you.
I would also like to say something real quickly. And I never know what is appropriate on this time, so I'll just make it real short. Ken, I've always appreciate you friend professionally and just want you to know that I love you and will continue keeping you in my prayers and talks.
Thank you. Thank you, Wayne. Appreciate it.
And I'd like to just make a short announcement. First of all, I'd like to thank former Chair Arnold for everything that you have done. And we will definitely keep you in our thoughts for future. It's a pleasure working with you. I'm also wanted to let the commission know that I will be going on leave. So next month you'll have someone different. So just wanted to let you guys know for the next probably three months, we will have, you guys will have another attorney that will be covering the the meetings.
God bless.
Good luck and you have a blessed child.
Thank you.
I hope the the walk that I seen you, the 5K, helped out a little bit.
I hope so.
Yeah.
Wanted to say something. Katya's birthday was a few days ago. Someone to wish her a happy birthday. Happy birthday, Katya.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Okay. I don't know if I congratulated you, Francis, but congratulations. I'm sorry, I was deep in my my thoughts with Ken. And so congratulations if I didn't say it for being the vice chair.
Thank you.
Okay, so I would like to adjourn the meeting at 7:39.
Good night, everybody. Have a blessed evening. Bye bye.
Good night.